The meeting is now live.
I would like to call the Monday, November 8th meeting of regular meeting of City Council to order here on the homelands of the Tonaha peoples. Maurice, do we have any additional items this evening?
We have no late items.
All right, hearing none, could I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Councillor Dallam, thank you very much. Councillor Kiddo, seconds. All those in favor. The motion is carried. I'm wondering, I should recognize that Councillor McBain and Councillor Roberts are webexed in from afar this evening and welcome, Councillor McBain and Councillor Roberts. I'm wondering if I should maybe say rather than all in favor, doing any opposed tonight? What do you think, Maurice? You okay with that?
Sorry, I was busy doing something else. Could you please repeat?
I was gonna say with with our two councillors remote tonight, if the question is any opposed as opposed to all in favor. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
All right, awesome, thank you. Okay, we've adopted the agenda. Next up is the adoption of council minutes of the special meeting of October the 4th. Mover please. Councillor Goodwin, thank you very much. Seconded by councillor, councillor Kiddo. Hey, we're down two courts, guys. We're a little extra duty for the guys in the council chamber tonight. All those in favor. Opposed? It'll take me a minute to get climatized. Next up, we have adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on October the 25th. Councillor Dallam moves, councillor Kiddo seconds. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We will gain our stride here momentarily. Okay, first up tonight is bylaw for adoption, the City of Kimberley Short Term Rental Unit License Bylaw. And the motion is that that council adopt the City of Kimberley Short Term Rental Unit License Bylaw. Mover, councillor Goodwin, thank you, and second or councillor Dallam. All right, discussion. Justin, do we have anything additional to bring to the table?
Good evening, council. No, nothing new to bring to the table. This is the same bylaw that was voted on last week under third reading and just up for adoption now.
All right, thanks, Justin. I went through the few letters that that were sent in and most of the letters were surrounding clarifications on process as opposed to objection about particular items. And I think that for the most part, every one, any, all of the operators are in agreement that we're in a pretty good place, if not perfect. And I think everybody is of the opinion that we're ready to go for a period of time. And if something comes up that needs adjustment, that staff will be in a position to raise the flag on that and have a further discussion in the future. Is that a fair comment, Justin?
Absolutely, I believe so, yeah. And following adoption, we're ready to roll with all of the application forms and a guide for the the operators to be released tomorrow is the plan.
All right, excellent. Further comment or councillor Dallam, then councillor Kiddo?
Actually, I was just pointing to.
Oh, okay, councillor Roberts, then councillor Kiddo.
Yeah, thank you. I have been reading the letters as you've indicated, and I'm just so impressed with the work that Justin's done on this and the manner in which he's dealt with all the comments and concerns and the fact that he's managed to mitigate pretty nearly every one of them into some kind of a promise. So it's really nice to see that work being done in such a cooperative way and and in a way that's gonna really make a difference for us all.
Thanks for the comments, councillor Roberts. Councillor Kiddo?
I was gonna say the same thing, just appreciate Justin's level of communication on this, the back and forth has been fantastic. I love the tone, it's great.
All right, further. Hearing none, we'll call the question. Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, great work, Justin. And yeah, we'll we'll move into the next phase and hopefully it will go smoothly. Everything is set up for that, so best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have the proposed road closure bylaw for 945 Staples Avenue and the motion on the floor is that council adopt the highway closure dedication removal bylaw number 2701. Councillor Dallam moves and councillor Goodwin seconds. Troy, can you or who will be speaking to this?
I can speak to that, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, this this road closure bylaw is ready for adoption. I noted in the staff report that at the time of writing that report, we hadn't actually heard for sure from Ministry of Transportation, but early this morning I did get confirmation that they have no concerns with the proposed road closure bylaw. So the stage is clear for for council to adopt this bylaw. And just as a real quick reminder, this is to close a section of road right of way adjacent to the property at 945 Staples Avenue. The piece of property that's largely hillside, a little bit of flat area and to allow for, there's actually an existing garage encroaching on that right now. So this will allow for future improvements to that garage area and other landscaping improvements there.
All right, excellent. Questions, council? All right, hearing none, call the question, all those in favor. Any opposed? And that motion is carried. Apologies, guys. We'll get it right. Okay, next up, we have we have the individual travel and expense grant application. Of G1. Yeah, hang on a second here. 287 Spokane, okay, beg your pardon. So first up, we have the easement agreement for 287 Spokane Street. Which which building is that, Troy?
That is the the building formerly known as City Bakery.
All right. Excellent, thank you for that. And on the the motion on the floor is that council approve the proposed encroachment of a balcony extending approximately 1.2 meters over the sidewalk. And second, further, that council authorize the corporate officer to publish a statutory notice of disposition pursuant to the appropriate section of the community charter. And finally, that council authorize mayor and CAO to sign the easement agreement following the proposed encroachment over the part of Spokane Street sidewalk in the platel after the statutory notice requirements have been completed. Councillor Kiddo moves and councillor Dallam seconds. Comments on this one, Troy?
Yes, I think fairly straightforward. The property is undergoing some renovations inside and out. Normally, the the exterior renovations are normally dealt with as a delegated authority to staff to deal with, but because of the proposed encroachment of the of the proposed new balcony on the on the second floor that will project out over the over the sidewalk, it does require council's approval or blessing of that that proposed encroachment. And staff have reviewed that plan and identified that it's it's approvable and no concerns from a staff perspective. There's plenty of vertical clearance from sidewalk and it's not going to interfere with any existing or or planned infrastructure within the platel area there. So it's very similar in nature and scale to many other kind of balcony or canopy encroachments that you might see on other properties in in the platel area, in the downtown area. And so staff recommends that we move forward on that.
All right, excellent, thank you, Troy. Any questions, council? All right, hearing none, call the question. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up, we have the individual travel and expense grant application from Quinn Morgan in the amount of $300. Could I have a mover? Councillor Kiddo, thank you. Councillor McBain, seconds. All right, discussion. Is Pam on the line?
She is. Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Pam. I can only see a half a dozen folks on the bar across the top, so you're now in the six, the top six, so have at it.
For sure. Quinn Morgan is a local Nordic athlete. She's attending national event this year. The grant allows for $300 for a national event. She did receive the grant last year, but did not end up using the funds because those events were canceled. But we fully expect her events this year to go ahead or in March. So it's our recommendation that we move forward with the $300 expense grant.
All right, thanks for that, Pam. Any questions or comments, council?
There, go. Did we move this? Has this been, is this on actually? Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, 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 fine, thanks.
Any comments?
Wish Quinn all the luck in the world.
Yeah, best of luck, Quinn. Our Nordic club has is really an outstanding track record of sending athletes to national competitions and doing really well, really well, both national and international. And we wish wish Quinn the best of luck. Call the question. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have the utility billing adjustment request on a property at 490 Spokane Street. And the motion on the floor is that council receive the CFO's staff report. Councillor Goodwin moves and councillor Kiddo seconds. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, again, this report is provided just for information. Typically, council, typically, we don't burden council with these types of requests, but we did receive some correspondence addressed to mayor and council, hence the reason for the report. So just a bit of history on this, in August of this year, the city was contacted by the owner of 490 Spokane Street who requested that a second garbage cart, recycling cart be provided for the use of the tenants of a property secondary suite. To the credit of the accounts receivable clerk, the request prompted an investigation of the utility account associated with the property, which it turns out it had never been billed additionally utility fees historically, as as is required by the bylaw. So when the council receivable clerk found that out, typically, the trigger for a new account to be set up to bill utilities is an occupancy certificate from the the building official. Upon review of the file, the official found there was no occupancy certificate in the file. It's an old permit, so that's probably got something to do with it, probably the reason why there was never a utility account set up for this. In any event, upon being advised that there was a utility account for secondary, there was a secondary suite at this property, a utility account was set up. And there was a retroactive billing applied to the account going back to the beginning of the year. It was noted in the email from the property owner, they took ownership in October of 2019, I believe it was. So just out of fairness, the billing wasn't billed back the entire two and a bit years, it was just going back to the the 1st of January 2021. So just with regards to the financial implications, I've noted that the the amount of the billing was $338.66. In his email, the property owner does note that he was charged garbage collection, garbage collection fees for the month of September. But the the second garbage bid that he requested didn't show up till October. So we will adjust the account by the the $2.35 associated with that. But aside from that, the result of the retroactive billing is that the property owner is being billed for charges that were used, services that were used by his tenant. So the the remainder of those charges will will stand on his account.
All right, questions or comments, council? I guess I just have one kind of question and or comment. It seems kind of at the heart of this, Jim. It had to do with the permits and the timing around permits or permits that did exist or did not exist. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, so the there was two permits in the file. They were filed by the building official. The first one was, when I initially inquired into it, the building official replied that there was no permit on file for the creation of a secondary suite. But on closer review, there was a drawing in that file that did make reference to an apartment. So it was a determination was made that that permit from 1978 was likely the creation of a secondary suite. There was another permit on file in relation to some work that was done at the entrance to the upper suite. In the email, it was indicated by the property owner that that's that permit had been closed. The the building official advised that it had never been closed. And that in order for that permit to be closed, he needs to be contacted by the property owner to come out and do a final inspection to, just to ensure that some outstanding issues related to the permit had been taken care of.
So and what communication has gone back to the, you know, to the claimant?
There was a an email string, it was about 45 pages long, I believe. There was a bunch of duplicates in there, but there's quite extensive communication between the property owner, myself, and the the accounts receivable clerk, just indicating what's what's been communicated here, with the exception of the reversal of the $2.35. But if the council receives this for information, we'll certainly contact the property owner and make them aware of that.
Okay, awesome, thanks for that, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, just a question about process. When a building official is satisfied that all the work has been done appropriately and closes a building permit, I assume we give something in writing as opposed to just a verbal commitment or how does that work?
Yeah, that's that's certainly my understanding. I see Troy's still on the line here, he can he can speak in, speak up if I'm if I'm wrong on that one. But yeah, typically, when, oh, sorry, go ahead, Troy.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, typically, there's at least a a clear final inspection and a and that on that inspection, it's noted as the file is closed. Or in some cases, if it's, you know, for a for a new unit or renovation of a unit, there there's actually an updated occupancy certificate issued. In this particular case, it, I think the appropriate mechanism is just completion of final inspection and and a note to the file and to the applicant that that file is considered closed. So as Jim said, we'll we'll, pending discussion here tonight, we'll follow up with with the property owner there and make sure it's clear on the required, the work that requires correction on that permit before it can be closed.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Troy. All right, call the question. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up, we have the couple of check runs in the amount of $1,411,016.46. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor, no, councillor Roberts and councillor McBain seconds. Discussion. Anything to pull out that is nonroutine?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the largest chunks of money on this situation involve all the work that's been done with regard to the roads and the paving and pest construction, our paving and so on. Those are the biggest chunks and, of course, everybody's been aware of all the expedient work we've been doing just before the winter. So I think that's the biggest piece of it right there.
All right, awesome, thanks for that, councillor Roberts. Further, call the question. Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we have several items this evening in correspondence, a couple of action items and others for information. So let's bring these in in two tranches tonight. The first, under the action items, the first two letters, items 1.1 and 1.2. Mover please. Councillor Goodwin, thank you. And councillor Oakley, seconds. Discussion. So we have the letter, the letter from Danica and the WildSafe BC, who is our BC, WildSafe BC coordinator. And what is Danica asking for this evening?
Three hours.
Yeah, the three hour, the three hour training piece. Do we have, who from staff can?
I'd like to speak to this one.
Please.
Danica is also asking to work with staff on a bear smart committee, which I think is a really good idea. I've been timping around getting back into the wildlife game, but I view this more as a solid waste management issue than dealing with wildlife. And I hate to see what happens to bears when when they get into garbage. So I think it's it's a great idea. I wish I wish we'd started it a few years ago instead of being distracted by other wildlife. And yeah, I'd be happy to have staff work on this.
Awesome, thanks for that, Scott. So go ahead.
Scott, do you need a motion from us in order to move forward with?
Yeah, I, I seek your approval. You know, I imagine council does want us to be involved in this. A resolution would be great. You could refer it back to me for a staff report if if you want more details around it, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need a staff report. You have a motion?
I would move that the city participate in the bear stewardship committee as per however the CAO recommends we do that.
Secondary, councillor Dallam. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Daryl.
I think there's a, I appreciate the work that staff's done and Scott's recommendation I fully agree with on this one. I I guess the, you know, we're a city that's surrounded with a lot of wilderness, so wildlife interactions are gonna happen. I, you know, it's very unfortunate that bears lose their lives to solid waste management issues, so I'm really glad the city's gonna help out with this. But it's probably, and I'm really glad that Danica has identified, you know, almost, you know, exact times and, you know, how much we're gonna have to put into this to help out. So that's, I appreciate that.
Yeah, great comments.
Did a really nice job of writing that letter.
Councillor Dallam.
Steve, I'm on the same vein as everyone else in appreciating this, and I hope that we can hear more about this and the results in the future.
All right, with all the question, any opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks for that, Scott. Next up, we have the letter from Andrew Louis, who is the regional program manager for Cball, the Columbia-based Alliance for Literacy. And if I'm reading this correctly, what she's looking for is for us to help get the word out on the various programs that that Cball has in place here this fall and through the winter. Am I reading that correctly? Sorry, I see. So I'm a little, well, not so much unclear, I guess, can we pass this over to communications, Scott?
Certainly, yes.
I think that would be the most appropriate. So do we need a motion for that or just to refer, refer the letter to Pam for action?
Yes, we can, we can just refer it to Pam.
Okay, well, so a motion to refer or we just will leave that with you?
It's always best if we can say mayor and council resolve that.
All right. Councillor Dallam moves and councillor Kiddo seconds. Any opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thanks for that, Scott. Pardon me. Okay, next up, we have four, five, six, seven more items of correspondence for information.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, you still have a motion to receive the correspondence on the table. That was moved by.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry about that. I was paying attention to the wrong vote. So we will now call the question on receipt of those last two items. Any opposed? Motion is carried. So we now need a motion to bring the balance of correspondence into receipt. Councillor Goodwin, thank you. And councillor Dallam, seconds. Any, any comments on any of this, council? I think we've made reference to the letters from with regard to the to the short term rental by law already. Okay, hearing none, any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, wow, 7:25, that brings us to an to the end of the regular agenda. We do have an in camera this evening, but before we get to that, we would like to open up questions or comments on anything that was talked about at tonight's meeting to the public. And if there are any members of the public that wish to comment, the number to call is 800-741-7180. And when prompted, the meeting number is 1-873-816269. So if you make that call, and while we're waiting to see if we do have any questions or comments, we will do our our usual council roundtable. And how about if we start with councillor Roberts?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much to report, although I did spend two or three hours in the morning last week listening to the improvements to the forestry policy that have been, that have been brought forward. It's kind of high level when they talk about what they're going to do. It's a, it's like more like the goal than the actual action, but the goal certainly has a lot to do with cooperation and and moving together with the indigenous folks to take some lessons about forest management, as well as some of the rules and so on that are coming down the pipe. Like I say, they they presented to you as a strategy or a goal as opposed to a totally itemized process. But all that said, it feels as though there's an improvement in that direction.
All right.
That was it.
Thanks for that, councillor Roberts. Councillor McBain.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Had a meeting with the the Kimberley Public Library a couple of weeks, week and a half ago. Nothing really too earth shattering there. Did just get off a meeting prior to to this one here with the with the chamber and the main topic of discussion was the the light up. It looks like probably going ahead the week end of the 19th, I think it is, not this week.
Saturday, the 20th?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so they're just kind of trying to put all the fine details on on that. And yeah, hopefully should be an announcement to the public beyond this right now, soon. So, yeah, that's the that's the highlights for me.
All right, excellent. Good news on the light up, I think after a couple of years in limbo. The kids are gonna be looking forward to saying hi to Santa Claus.
Yeah, it's funny, I'm at a, I'm at a convention right now with quite a few people in it and a lot of very excited people to to not be doing the majority of the presentations virtually, actually, and see people in person, so.
Yeah, thank you, councillor McBain. Councillor Kiddo?
I attended a KCDS meeting a couple of weeks ago now with a couple of fellow councillors here. And unfortunately, I missed the Tourism Kimberley meeting last week, just the the work schedule and the council schedule sometimes just don't go together very well. But I was able to check in with John, our executive director, and then Todd, the the chairman, just things are going pretty good. I was very happy to see the the Kimberley Alpine Resource Decision to go in line with Western Canada Ski Alliance to maintain that everyone needs to be vaccinated before they come to Kimberley and ski there. So very happy to see that. But things seem to be going pretty good, but it's very apparent we're gonna need to really go to that 3% model next year for sustainability of the organization.
Excellent, thank you for that. Councillor Dallam.
Beyond KCDS meeting, I have nothing new.
We're all primed for Wednesday?
I spent a little bit of time getting the leaves off the grass and we're, Thursday is remember it's day. Wednesday, I'll be going to a school as well as the garden view, so.
Thursday's, my apologies.
Yes.
I would have remembered.
Absolutely. People re-serve, ready to go.
Yeah, absolutely. So just if you could maybe just give an update on what you're expecting and kind of how the process will work.
So we will have the pipe started up at 10:30 and I believe just 10:46 is the official get off the ground time, so that we get our moan with silence as close to the correct time as possible. We're not turning anybody away and we don't expect to have any restrictions dropped on this within the next few days, so should be excellent.
Yeah, awesome. Hopefully, we won't have ankle deep snow.
I agree.
I agree.
Hold off for one more day.
Yes.
Counselor Oakley.
No meetings, but I am happy to report a successful Halloween. Twenty-three kids came and see full-size chocolate bars from my house. Very happy that, you know, I had enough purchasing around eighty just to make sure, so.
Have any left?
Not very many.
I'm coming to your house next year, Daryl.
Yeah, me too.
Anyway, nothing to report. I've got AGM for Underground Mining Railroad coming up.
All right, excellent. Thanks, Daryl. Counselor Goodwin.
Well, I too attended the KCDS meeting, and that group is meeting largely to help to wind down its operations, figure out all the details of how we do that. But we also had a Kimberley Health Center Society meeting. We have another meeting this Wednesday, Jason, to do visioning, and we're hooking up an online capability for you. If you can make it, that'd be great.
Wednesday, Kent?
It's Wednesday, yeah. Yeah, I put it on your calendar. Anyway.
I just might be driving. Oh, oh, I'll, I'll, if I can make it work, I'll be there, but I might be driving.
Okay. All right, we won't wait for you if if you're, okay. The things on the agenda with the Health Center Society is that it looks like the primary care network that Interior Health is working on is now getting ready to expand into some new space in the building, but at this point, we don't have any details on how much or exactly where that would be, but that would provide some additional revenue to the society, which would be very good. We're also in talks with the Food Recovery Program about moving them into a larger space and actually collecting rent from them as opposed to giving them free space because they feel they'll have enough grants to be able to do that. Both details have yet to be worked out. And then we hope to have this visioning session on Wednesday night to talk a little bit about what the health center could be in the future. Is it going to remain just a health center? Is it going to broaden its mandate? How broad can it broaden it? Is it, how does it keep a community focus? All of that stuff. So that will help us then focus on what we do next as far as renovations and attracting tenants goes, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Hopefully, it all comes together.
Yeah. Thank you for that. So a couple of things to report on my part. As Counselor Roberts was saying, the forestry policy renewal webinar, I was on that along with Counselor Roberts. I sat through a BC provincial nominee program session, kind of one of our quarterly sessions on the program and the implementation of the program. I attended the College of the Rockies Board Retreat, which was this year in Kimberley, up at the Alpine Resort. Had a opportunity to talk a little bit about Kimberley, and Duncan MacLeod was also a speaker that night, talking about the International School. It was a was an excellent session with the with the coder board. And Thursday and Friday was Regional District, along with a hospital board meeting on Friday. The summary of content of that will be published here shortly, and I'll make sure that everybody, everybody gets a copy of that. Of note, Rob Gay has been returned as the chair of the board for one more year. And Susan Klovchuk returns as the vice chair for another year. The chair and vice chair elections happen every year, so both of them were served as chair and vice chair last year. So pretty much business as usual moving forward. They both have done an excellent job. Okay, that's it for me. Maurice, do we have any questions from the public?
We don't have any questions from the public.
All right, hearing none. We do need to move in camera, and if I could have a motion to do that, Counselor Kittle moves and Counselor McBain seconds. Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, we will take two minutes to shift gears and we'll move into in-camera. Thank you.